Welcome to the regular council meeting for the City of Bossier City. It is 3:01, Tuesday, July 18, 2023. We'll start with our invocation by Councilmember Jeffrey Darby and our Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Brian Hammond.
Let's pray. Father, thank you for another time that you brought us together to this place to do the business of this city. We thank you for those who are here. We ask, Lord God, that you would bless them, bless their family, their loved ones, near and distant. Lord, we ask that you bless those who serve others. We thank you for those who are public servants, those who are humble servants. We pray, Father, you give us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to do the things that bring glory to your name. It's in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Please face the flag and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Real call.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Hammond.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Maggio.
Here.
All present. Counsel, in accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings laws and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the City Council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the Council on any agenda item may approach and state their name and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. All other audience members are asked to please observe the meeting quietly, and if there is a need for audience members to hold a conversation or take a phone call, you're asked to please step out of the meeting. City Council-appointed Sergeant-at-Arms have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting in order to maintain orderly conduct of the meeting.
All right, counsel, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of July 5, 2023.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Smith. Questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Question carries.
Entertaining motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Smith. Second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Ceremonial matters, recognition of guests.
Ms. Claire Woods, Greenfield Environmental Trust Group, Inc., Trinox Kerr McGee site cleanup.
Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be back here again. I'm Claire Woods. I work for Greenfield Environmental Trust Group, and we're responsible for remediating or cleaning up the former Trinox Kerr McGee site over on Hamilton Road. I think most of you folks here have heard from me before. I'll be using these slides as we proceed. So I'm going to just give a little site overview very briefly since I know you all are familiar with the site. I'll talk about the excavation that we've now completed over at Scott Dickerson Homes. And then I'll talk a little bit about another project, a phase two of the excavation work, which is the replacement of the parking lot at Scott Dickerson Homes. That is currently underway. And then we'll talk a little bit about residential soil sampling that we're working on, training opportunities and redevelopment planning, and I'm going to move through all this very quickly. So the overview of this site, this is a site that had wood treating operations from around 1930 to 1987. In the '80s, Kerr McGee purchased the site, and then in the late '80s, the facility was decommissioned. Currently, there is contamination on the site. On-site, there is creosote and benzene and polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons. Off-site, we don't have any creosote that we've seen so far, but we do see polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons. So the site is on this map divided into two areas. The main plant, or the main property, which is the larger property on the right in yellow, and then the west property, which is a smaller area on the other side of Hamilton Road. You can see Hamilton Road divides the two properties that are at issue. And then highlighted in pink is Scott Dickerson Homes, which is a property owned by the Housing Authority of Bossier City. So here you can see an aerial of the site again. You have the main property, which is on the right side, and that's where the most intensive treatment operations happen during the life of the facility's operation. The company that was responsible for these operations used drainage ditches to convey their waste off-site. This was well before any environmental regulations and also before the apartment homes which are now there were built. Eventually, I think this company got wind of that environmental liability was coming, and they stopped using the ditches, and they covered up the ditches with fill. And then the Housing Authority building was unfortunately built on top of that contaminated property. So the company that was responsible for this filed for bankruptcy, and the bankruptcy court appointed our trust group to facilitate the cleanup. So one of the first projects, of course, we went through extensive investigations around the site and on the site. And one of the first things that we identified is that we wanted to prioritize the cleanup of the residential neighborhood. There is contamination on-site, and we will get to that. But for us, we really want to prioritize contamination in the neighborhood. So we started with this first project, which was an excavation project at Scott Dickerson Homes. We excavated to different depths depending on what the investigation showed us as to how deep the contamination was. So in some areas, we excavated to two feet, some areas to three feet. Those are, two is yellow slash orange, three is pink on the map. And then we went down to five feet in some areas which are shown in green. We collected confirmation samples at the bottom and sides of each of the excavation pits to make sure that we got everything. If a sample came back with a hit that exceeds state-based standards, then we would go back in and do more removal. These are just some photos of the work while it was ongoing. This work was completed earlier this year, but since I haven't been to give an update since November, I did want to share a couple of photos of the excavation process. You can see it was really invasive work. It was a burden on the folks who live in that community, and we took a lot of precautions to try to minimize the impacts on the residents there. The work there is now complete. The backfill is in place, topsoil is in place. Most of the area, the grass has completely come back, all the fences are down. We also put in two new basketball courts. We resurfaced one of the basketball courts, and we put in a brand-new basketball court on the south court. So that brings me to the current project. While we were preparing to do the first phase of the work which I just described, we were actually out here in the beginning of 2022, and we saw that the Housing Authority was doing a project in the parking lot. We just happened to see that they had pulled up part of the parking lot, and there was contamination underneath. The bottom photo here is a photo that I took just that very day. So we began to speak with the Housing Authority about what to do. We didn't want them to, over time, be replacing sections of the parking lot and potentially expose workers. And so we came up with the solution to replace the whole lot that will protect workers in the future. So that is what we are currently doing now. We started that project last month. So the work's going to happen in two phases. You can see here on the top image, that's an aerial of the parking lot, and the area that's going to be replaced is in yellow. And the top area is what we call the north lot, the bottom is the south lot. And so we're doing this in two phases to try to minimize impacts on residents. We've started with the first phase, which is the north lot, in June, and we should be done with the north lot pretty soon, at which time we'll move to the south lot. We are replacing the entire parking lot. When this is done, they'll have a brand-new surface to park on, no cracks or anything like what they have right now. We're going to be removing the concrete and soil down to 18 inches. The sidewalks and curbs are going down to 24 inches, and the grassy areas are going down to between two and five feet. And then, of course, we're installing new sidewalks and concrete and putting in new seed for grass. We've done a lot to try to figure out how to minimize this work. These residents already went through a lot in the first phase of the project, and then unfortunately, we're now having to go back in. So we did issue a resident survey, brought it door-to-door to try to understand. Actually, Councilperson Darby came with me to share the survey with residents and try to get their preferences for construction start times. We also have our community liaison here, Tracy, who's present. She lives on Scott Street, and she goes door-to-door to canvas information and provide windshield notices to residents about the work that's happening. And then we're also continuing the air monitoring that we did in the first phase of the work, providing traffic control and installing fencing. There's so many kids out there right now, and that's something that our team is really aware of. Doing this work in summer is difficult, not only for the families in the area, but also for the workers who are experiencing really extreme heat, and that's impacted the work as well. But in the end, this is, long-term, a good project for the Housing Authority and for the residents there because it will minimize the risk that workers could be exposed in the future. Oops. So here again is just an aerial of the parking lot. If you want to take a look later, the shading corresponds to the different depths of excavation. And then I did just want to share, we're very aware that the residents rely on this parking lot. Residents with young children or mobility issues, they need their parking space right there in front of their home. So we did construct a temporary parking lot, which is on the corner of Dickerson and Scott Street, just about a block away, but even that far, we know can be a heavy lift for residents. So we are providing a shuttle service for residents and guests. That's a 24-hour shuttle. There are signs and a phone number, so people, if they need a ride to their front door, they can either flag the shuttle service down or give them a call or shoot them a text. We also have security and lighting, and we've been consulting with the city to make sure that all of the requirements are met for this work. These are some pictures. I actually took a couple of these this morning of the ongoing work. You can see the excavation happening in the north part of the parking lot. You can see on the top right, you can see that orange fabric that they lay down. They lay that down at the bottom of the excavation pit to make sure that if this ever comes up in the future, if there's ever construction work in the future, here, construction workers will see the fabric lining. It's specifically designed for this purpose, and they'll notice stop before they go further. And then you can see in the bottom left, the machinery placing clean backfill. And then you can see two types of air monitoring equipment that we have, monitoring the air. Through the course of the first phase of the project, we had zero real-time air monitoring exceedances. And for the air monitoring that we were bringing to the lab, none of it was at a level that would pose a risk to health on average. All right, just real quick. We are doing, because of reports that we've heard from residents about historic flooding in the ditches around the site, we are doing some additional soil sampling in people's yards. And so this has been an ongoing project. It started earlier this year. We've already taken a number of samples, about half the additional samples we want to take. And the areas that we're looking at are right above the site, around in the Green and Scott Street area, just to the left in this aerial of Scott Dickerson Homes. And the other area is on the other side of Hamilton on Green Street, just north of the west property. And you can see the highlighted area there. And then the third area is south of the site on Carver Street. And we've, oh, that doesn't look great, but this is a flyer that we distributed to, in the actual hard copy version, you can see the text. And we distributed this flyer to try to get residents to sign up for the sampling. As I said, of the additional samples we're trying to take, there were around 50 total, and we still need permission from 24 more residents. So if you get people in your districts asking about this, encourage them to reach out to us and see if they're eligible for sampling. We've had a really hard time after mailings, going door-to-door, getting the remaining folks to sign up. All right, and then I just wanted to touch on a training program that we developed. This training course was a two-part construction training course, and the purpose was to share information about the environmental construction industry and provide people in the neighborhood with hands-on experience. So it was designed to be a two-day course. The first day was a day of classroom instruction, and it covered health and safety, concrete basics, pouring concrete. There was also a resume workshop and interview skills workshop. And then the second day was a field instruction day where the trainees would have the opportunity to be in the field, work on the project, and pour concrete for a platform. Unfortunately, we didn't have enough people sign up. We didn't have enough applications. So this course was actually supposed to be held this past Saturday, and we weren't able to offer it given the number of applications that we received. But I do think that it's possible, and I would love to re-initiate this project at another time, perhaps when we're closer to doing work on the main property and where there will be more direct hiring opportunities. I'm hopeful that that might provide an incentive for folks to sign up. And then just one final slide on redevelopment planning. As I said, we've prioritized the residential area to try to remove contamination from the neighborhood as quickly as we can. But we will be turning to the main site to design and get LDEQ, Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality, approval for a remedy there. Once we have a remedy there, we're going to be seeking reuses that benefit the community. And the reuse is going to be based on the cleanup standard we're able to achieve, and it's also not expected to be something that happens in the next six months or 12 months. It's a long-term planning process. But we have gotten started with that process. We held a redevelopment planning workshop earlier this year, and we'll be holding another one in September. And the purpose of the workshop is so people from the neighborhood can come to us and share their ideas and hopes and wants for the future use of the site. We got a lot of good ideas at the last session. We also, based on the feedback we got at the March session, we developed and issued last month a redevelopment planning survey, which the purpose is to collect more information from a broader group of people about the types of uses that they'd like to see. We're also recruiting residents for a redevelopment planning working group, and we welcome participation from city officials in either our workshops or on our working group, if there's interest. And I think that's all I have. Are there any questions?
I've got one for you.
Yes.
The larger section that is on the east side of Hamilton Road, which I'm sure that's your largest area, right there, do you foresee that, after y'all get done, that being able to be reused?
We hope that both the west property on the west side and the east property, or the main property, will be something that can be put into useful production. So there are some limitations because of whatever the environmental standards are that we're able to achieve. But we've done sites before where we've had like a health facility with a parking lot, and the parking lot overlays the most contaminated part of the property. A parking lot allows for a protective barrier, so there's no risk of contamination through touch. So that type of use is something that we are interested in, and we're trying to understand right now if residents and community members would be, you know, what their desired uses are and see if we can find something that's compatible with the environmental conditions.
All right, thank you.
Additional questions, counsel?
Well, thank you very much for having me. I'm happy to come back at any time that it would be useful. We'll check in in another six months or so. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ginger Adam Corley, the 2023 legislative update.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members, for having me today. I'll make my comments brief and then take any questions you may have. We were in a fiscal session this year. Each legislator was allowed to file five general subject matter bills. The focus of the debate for two months was on the expenditure limit on whether or not to raise the cap to spend excess funds or surplus funds. The state's sitting on about $2.2 billion in excess revenue from this current fiscal year and then surplus funds for last year. Of interest to the city, I'm going to rattle off a couple of things that we'll be following up on. The Jimmy Davis Bridge project remained in the capital outlay bill. Unfortunately, a large chunk was removed in conference committee. Bond commission meets Thursday at 10:00 a.m., and on the agenda is the reauthorization of the Priority One cash amount and the Priority Five noncash amount. The administration, as well as our legislative delegation, have said that the money that was removed would be replaced. I'll continue to monitor that. The contract's been let. I think the state's going to have to come up with the money one way or another to finish the work that's ongoing. Also, when they raised the expenditure limit, they put $50 million more in the Water Sector Commission. Maybe another opportunity. I know we had had two applications last fall. We did get $5 million for the South Bossier Water Line. This may be another opportunity for us to put a new application in. I'll work with the administration here on that to see if that's something we want to pursue. We are in a veto override session today. They started at noon. There were 25 bills that the governor vetoed and three bills where he vetoed portions. He has line item veto on all money bills. There's only one bill so far that they've gotten enough votes to override, and it's lying over right now. I suspect they'll suspend the rules, take it up tonight, if not tomorrow. None of them really directly impact Bossier, the government of Bossier. I don't think they're going to get into the spending bills. We have to have a state budget that's balanced. So if they start removing things or adding things back, it really brings into question whether or not they're going to be able to do that with a simple up or down vote on the governor's override. There were a lot of bills that impacted how we operate as a government. The parish e-file system, as the collector for the parish, is being moved from the Department of Revenue to the uniform local sales tax board. So taxpayers will be able to pay state and local taxes, and the board will thereby move them to the jurisdictions they go to. If you recall, the state's been trying for years to do state centralized collection. The locals have pushed back. This board is made up of LMA police juries, sheriff, school boards, that will get some hybrid of uniform collection. There's also what's called the Louisiana Fiscal Transparency Website, transparency website, I'm sorry. It's Louisiana Checkbook. Right now, you can go on it and find out every check the state writes, what they're spending money on. They made it adaptable for all local governments, school boards, sheriffs, cities, parishes to upload their comprehensive financial data at the end of the year as well. That is something they're going to be asking us for in light of transparency efforts at the state level. Another opportunity for money is the broadband. We've got a lot of money from the federal government, and I know that may not be an issue for all of the city, but there may be pockets of areas that we could apply for to get some money here. It will be run through the state's Office of Broadband, and then those grants are going to be on an application basis. I'll also work with the city's administration on some of that. I don't want to get into a lot of debate. I met with the city attorney of the administration. I'll follow up on the specifics with them. We do have four constitutional amendments on the ballot in October, and we have four on the ballot in November. It is election year. We had a lot of changes, I think, in the way the districts were made up, as all of you know. We have a governor's race. All of our statewide elected officials are up. So I'm sure I'll be back up here in the fall, meeting with the delegation to get organized for next year under whomever is governor. But I wanted to make all of you aware of that. And I'm happy to answer any questions on specific bills. I know this report was emailed to you and some of my other information, but I make myself available if you have any questions, Mr. President.
Thank you so much. Any questions?
Ms. Corley, you and I spoke about the possibility of application for the council on aging facility. Could you touch on that just a little bit?
Absolutely, Mr. Darby. You had asked me about money in the capital outlay bill. Applications by the city are due on November 1 every year, and that's something, as a body, that you'll decide if that's something you want to file with the state. And if that's the case, we have to have a local match. There are rules that I know your chief administrative officer as well versed in. There were some projects in the state that got money for council on agings. If you look at the Speaker's District and some of the leadership, they did. There was also the bill I sent you that allocates or raises the cap from $30,000 to $50,000 from the Office of Elderly Affairs to local councils of agings, if that's an opportunity for Bossier to apply for.
Thank you.
Sure.
Additional questions? Mayor?
Thank you, Ginger, for all you do.
And thank y'all for the opportunity to continue representing you, and I'll be here for the meeting if you'd like to ask anymore.
Thank you.
Public hearing, I'm sorry, I was skipping over bids. Bids, witness opening of sealed bids for P23-09 Belair Boulevard Improvement Project.
Good afternoon.
We have a sheet. What's the agenda?
That's it.
That's it, your hand.
My bad, thank you.
We only have one project that we're opening bids for today. It is the bid number P2309 Belair Boulevard Improvements Project. There were four addenda. One included the pre-bid conference and some additional information. There were two that extended the bid dates, and one updated the bid form, had a couple of planned changes. So it did add an alternate on there. We only had one company to submit a bid for that, and it's Boggs &amp; Poole Contracting. They do have their bid bond. Their bid is $491,000. They acknowledged all four addenda, and their alternate is $105,000. I ask that you approve the reading of this bid.
Second.
Okay, first and second from Councilman Williams and Councilman Smith. Questions from the audience on these bids? This bid. Counsel? Please cast your vote.
Question carries. Public hearing, action on unfinished business. Adopt an ordinance to contract Shreveport Communications to provide maintenance for a variety of city systems. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience on this item? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached right-of-entry agreement related to the construction of the new Jimmy Davis Bridge. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Maggio. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached joint cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of Bossier City and Bossier Parish School Board for the cost-sharing of traffic control officers at schools within Bossier City for the school year 2023-2024. Final reading.
So move. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Smith. Questions from the audience? Any questions from the council?
Yeah, Mr. President, I do. Yeah, Mr. President, I do. On the last meeting, when this was first introduced, there was some talk that not all of the intersections that the City of Bossier is paying for would be utilized after some traffic upgrades. I think W.T. Lewis was one of them, and Parkway High School, which, it's on here, Parkway High School's gonna have to, because that money fell through for the new entrance at Parkway High School, where we wouldn't have to pay for that. The cooperative endeavor agreement is still for $25,000. Are we gonna change that amount?
Charles, you know, or, okay, I'm sorry.
I can answer it, or Miss Donahue, go.
At this time, the traffic control that is planned around W.T. Lewis is not complete and is not planned to be complete until January or February. We're not sure if that is going to eliminate the need for the officers, so at this time, we're gonna leave it for the school year for the full amount, and then if we determine that it's not needed, then the school board will reimburse us those funds.
Last year, there were several days that traffic control was not needed due to the school holiday calendar, and the school board did provide reimbursement for those days that traffic control was not used or needed.
Okay.
Delay in that project, you know?
Sir?
The delay in that project?
I'm not sure why it got delayed. Originally, I know it was planned to be opened with the new school year, so I'm not sure what created that delay, but they're hoping for January, maybe February.
Any other questions? All right, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance amending ordinance number 59 of 2022 to include an appropriation of $60,000 from the 2023 Riverboat Capital Projects Fund. Final reading?
So move.
Second.
First, Councilman Smith.
I think it was Vince.
No, Smith.
It was Smith.
I guess Smith.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? Any questions from the council?
That was pleasant.
All right, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
New business?
Adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the City of Bossier City which affected property, public health, and safety due to the requirement to repair the ozone generator for Bossier's water treatment facility at a cost of $75,780 to come from the Water, Capital, and Contingency Fund. First and final reading?
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Darby, second by Councilman? Maggio. Questions from the audience on this agenda item? Any questions from the council? All right, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance appropriating $200,000 in funds from the 2018 LCDA bond fund to supplement the $500,000 appropriated in the 2023 Public Utilities Capital Budget for miscellaneous water loops necessary for improving water flow for fire protection. First reading?
So move. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Smith. Questions from the audience? Any questions on the council?
Yeah, Mr. President, I do. Why are we taking this money out of an LCDA bond fund?
I'm gonna defer to Ms. Angelo on the source of the phone.
Yes, we looked at the Water Capital Account, excuse me, Water Capital Fund, and there were not sufficient funds available, so we're borrowing from the LCDA. But there's a clause in the ordinance to pay it back.
I mean, that was just my question. I mean, Council Montgomery always stressed that, you know, in order to take money out of a bond, that the life expectancy of the project, or whatever we were buying, needs to be.
So this will be, we'll be using PVC or ducted line or pipe, so the life expectancy should well exceed the life of the pond. The reasoning for getting this and not waiting for the capital contingency to build up is, or power rating is coming up, and this is important for us to ensure that we have that proper fire protection to keep that high rating.
Class one.
The class one rating.
Yeah, no, that's very important.
So that's the only reason for the concern on doing it this way.
All right, thank you for the explanation.
Yes, sir.
Any additional questions? Thank you.
Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to appropriate the sum of $2 million from the sales tax capital fund for the purchase of two new pumper fire trucks for the Bossier City Fire Department. First reading?
So move. Second.
You guys wanna do it again? Mr. Williams and Mr. Smith. All right, questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
We're just ordering. We don't have to pay this right now, correct, Chief?
That is true. The last pumper we got, probably four years ago, we haven't received a truck in two years now. We're potentially supposed to receive one the latter part of this year, they're telling me, that we ordered in '20 or '21, all due to this new, just-like vehicle is hard to get. And they're quoting 720 days on a fire truck, regular fire truck, and three years on a Quint or ladder truck. But the bigger deal, too, when I got to asking the prices, I have two companies. I'm getting quotes from different places now because we, probably four years ago, paid $650,000 for a pumper, fully loaded. I got $9,007, well, I don't wanna say, but it was over $900,000 for this one, and not counting equipment. So I'm just trying to lock down the pricing, but odds are, I might not even see these be delivered. So you're gonna be two years away for you even. It's just cutting the PO and locking down pricing and getting in line. That's pretty much it.
Yeah, I just wanted, you know, the general public were spending too much. I just wanted them to understand the money's not going out right now, that basically, we're just cutting the PO to get the process started.
It'll be ladder 25 before it goes up, if we get it by then. So, maybe not.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
All right, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to sell adjudicated property. First reading?
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Maggio. Questions from the audience on this agenda item?
Are we gonna be auctioning these properties off, or?
Well, it depends on what, how the prospective purchaser wishes to purchase the property. There are two ways in which the city can sell adjudicated property, and that depends on whether or not the prospective purchaser wishes to receive merchantable title. Basically, there is a revised statute that allows the city to sell adjudicated property in a quit claim form upon proper notice and advertisement, and that depends on how long, the length of that advertisement depends on how long the city has owned the property, five years or more, or less than five years. So there are different notices, different advertisement requirements, you know, for that. Once that is done, you know, you determine whether not there are any city liens, the cost of the sale, so on and so forth, and it allows us, at public sale, either by private sealed bids or by live auction, to sell these properties. But you don't have to sell them for appraised value. You can sell them for, basically, your cost plus the clearing of liens. And so, and therefore, and it would be the responsibility of the purchaser, then, to do any kind of what they call curative work, you know, to achieve merchantable title, if they wanted to utilize these properties for various reasons in the future, development, mortgage, sale, things of that nature. The second way to do it, and Mr. Ray and myself are putting a process in place, would be to, that if a prospective buyer was interested in receiving merchantable title, then we would look and see what would be required to do that, suits to quiet title, you know, the clearing of liens, things of that nature. We would require then the purchaser to put down a deposit for the prospective cost in a certain percentage of the estimated amount, and then we would have to have the property appraised, declared surplus, you know, so on and so forth. So we're gonna have, we wanna put a process in place, depending on the wishes of the purchaser of how to dispose of these properties. We've received a lot of interest from developers, from just sometimes neighbors to the property, you know, that own land adjacent to some of these properties, and so it's, we have several hundred on the books. Quite frankly, they're a burden on Public Works to maintain, and so depending upon, you know, the desires or the wishes of the purchaser, then we're gonna put two separate processes in place.
Mr. Jacobs, how do you determine if you will use that first process or the second?
Okay, it would depend upon the purchaser. If, say, somebody comes, just, you know, buyer, and says, and you would explain to them, you know, "Look, you can either do it this way, you can do it that way, these would be your responsibilities," so on and so forth, and this would be the prospective timeframe, and this would be the estimated cost. Do you want us, the city, to basically do the curative work on your behalf and pay for it, and include that in the price of the sale, plus appraised value, plus, you know, the cost of appraisal, or are you willing to take a chance on that? We can quitclaim it to you with no guarantee of title in an as-is condition, and then, but you would then be responsible on the back end for doing all the curative or the legal work to obtain merchantable title. So that's a long way to say, I apologize, that would be determined by how the purchaser wishes to proceed.
Okay. So how would the first way be advantageous to the city, because there's no appraisal of the property?
Because it would allow the city to take those properties off of Public Works, that we would not have to spend money to maintain, you know, to cut grass, to do maintenance work, to get rid of dilapidated structures, things of that nature. So basically, that process allows you to sell, basically, for the city's cost in the sale, but you save money by taking them off the public road and then putting them back into commerce, and then the private landowner then would be responsible for all that.
Okay, that makes sense. All right, thanks. Charles, I have one question for you. So if, once somebody assumes that property, even though they don't have proper title, it is their responsibility at that time to maintain the property?
Correct. If they're gonna buy it in a quitclaim form without warranty of title, they would still have the responsibility to maintain the property up to the standards of the city.
Okay.
And then, of course, they would be subject to inspection and administrative counsel and all those processes.
So that would be 200 less properties that Public Works has to worry about mowing and property standards, going out and writing a report to theirself?
Correct. I think we have more than that, to be honest with you.
Mr. Jacobs, one other question. Just 'cause in my professional life, I deal with these type of properties, and a lot of times, these owners will buy them via quitclaim deed with no merchantable title.
Correct.
They're unable to get merchantable title, so then they just quit paying the taxes or quit paying any liens, and they just let them go back.
That is all.
And we take the properties back. Is there gonna be anything that we can do to prevent us from having to take the properties back if someone buys them?
That's the risk you take if you choose to sell these with, you know, by quitclaim and merchantable title. There's always a way to get title merchantable. It's just a matter of expense. You know, the whole problem with curing title is, it costs just as much, you know, to cure a problem on a $1,000 piece of property as it does a $1 million piece of property. The legal work is exactly the same regardless of the value of the property, and so that's a risk that you take if you're gonna choose to engage in this, you know, if you're gonna sell by quitclaim without warranty.
It kinda sounds like we need some legislation to kind of help municipalities deal with these a little bit easier after they've been on our books for so long, that we should be able to do some, you know, some other stuff with these properties and not have to go through the legal legwork and everything that we do.
That's where you get into constitutional questions about taking property without proper notice, due process, things of that nature, so.
Additional questions? All right, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to retain outside counsel for legal opinion. First and final reading?
So move. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Maggio. Questions from the audience? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, West Marriott, Sobolive 4308 Parkway Drive, Bossier City 71112. Gentlemen of the City Council, Mr. Mayor, fellow citizens, today I stand before you as a concerned citizen, representing the voices of thousands who have spoken out in loud and clear in favor of term limits for the mayor and the City Council of Bossier City. On July 10th, the Bossier Term Limits Coalition delivered 2,900 signatures from Bossier City voters demanding a change that reflects the true will of the people. Yet, instead of embracing this democratic mandate, the City Council is attempting to adopt a resolution that reeks of delay, desperation, and disregard for the people's wishes. This resolution seeks to retain outside counsel for a legal opinion on the matter, further delaying the implementation of term limits and wasting taxpayer dollars. But why the need for such excessive measures when we have a city attorney and the Attorney General of Louisiana, whose expertise could provide the answers you're seeking? It's clear that this resolution is nothing more than a thinly veiled attempt to undermine the voice of the people and protect the interests of outgoing term-limited City Council members. The fact that this resolution even exists raises questions about transparency, accountability, and integrity within this esteemed council. The people have spoken, and they demand term limits to ensure fresh ideas, new perspectives, and a continuous infusion of energy into our beloved city. Yet, by pursuing this resolution, you risk tarnishing the democratic process and alienating those who have placed their trust in you to uphold their interests. We need not look further than Chapter 5 of the Bossier City Charter to understand the people's mandate is clear. The language within Section 501 explicitly outlines the process which an ordinance can be submitted to the City Council. There is no ambiguity, no room for doubt. The people have exercised their right to be heard and it's your duty to respect and act upon their will. I urge you, esteemed members of the City Council, to reflect upon the gravity of this moment. The people have spoken, and they deserve a prompt, unbiased, and transparent response to their call for term limits. Do not let this resolution be a stain on your legacy or the legacy of Bossier City. Embrace the will of the people and stand with them in unity as they seek to shape the future of our great city. In conclusion, the people have spoken, and they demand you remember the principles on which our democracy stands, government for the people and by the people. Let Bossier City lead by example, setting a standard for accountability, integrity, and the will of the citizens. The time for term limits is now, and the people of Bossier City demand you vote against this resolution. Thank you.
David Crockett, 653 Domain Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. Thank you. You carried about half of the way to those petitions. I think that that perception is carried very well in recent articles, the settlement talks, SAD has written recent articles. Bossier Term Limits just released a press release on this issue. I wanna nugget down to a simple solution. Mr. President, one of the councilmen, he recalls very clearly, probably, that he basically issued a challenge to David Johnson at the Republican Women of Bossier Meeting, that if he wanted term limits, there's a way to pass term limits in the charter. According to Louisiana Constitution, Section 5C, "Adoption, Amendment, or Repeal, a Home Rule Charter shall be adopted, amended, or repealed when approved by the majority of the electors voting thereon at an election held for that purpose." In compliance with the Constitution, Section 2101B of the In compliance with the Constitution, Section 2101B of the Bossier City Charter titled amendments to the City Charter clearly defines the process for a change to the charter in the Bossier City by a petition of the electors. Section 2101 directs use of a petition in compliance with Section 501. See the petition, five signatures per page. I just about needed a back brace to carry it up here. Mr. President, after the electors of Bossier City's petition was signed and certified by the registrar of voters on July 10th, Section 2104 directs that you follow Section 501, that if any amendment is proposed by petition of the electors, the council shall submit the same to the electors of the city at a petition, at a special election to be called no less than 90 days nor more than 120 days after the receipt of the registrar's certificate of sufficiency. Any interpretation of the Constitution, Section 501, Section 21, does not change the fact that if you do not pass term limits, for whatever reason, legal arguments or other, you must put the electors' propositions on the ballot by the, by the November election to meet the 120-day requirement. If you delay, there will be additional cost to the taxpayers for an out-of-cycle election, and you will violate the city's charter. Debate about whether you can pass term limits by ordinance is not productive. You have a simple path of least resistance that will save Bossier City from wasteful spending, hiring expensive, redundant, outside attorney when we have over 40 years of legal expertise on your staff. Put these two propositions on the November ballot. September 25th is the filing date for propositions. Bossier Term Limits Coalition appreciates the help and especially the sponsorship of the ARPEC, the DPEC. We have people from NAACP who are talking to us directly in support of our efforts, the Convention of States who helped us with the petition, and the people of Bossier City. There are five signatures on every one of these pages. We feel like that, that any attempt to obfuscate or obstruct the will of the people will be regretted. Thank you, and I appreciate it and welcome, and thank you, Mr. President.
Additional comments from the
Hi there, I'm Holly Floyd, 1920, Alfred Lane, 71112. I'm here to speak more to the, the importance of being able to use the voice as our voice as citizens as it pertains to this legal opinion. And I have a daughter who will be 18 on July 22nd, and I've spent the last year taking her all over the country so she could see how other cities work, because I don't want her here. She has no future in the city, not in the career fields that she's interested in. I'm a fourth generation. I left for 20 years. We have not moved forward. It's the same game that it's been for years in the city. And people don't participate because they feel like they don't have a voice. This, right now, is absolutely reassuring people that people have spoken. You're right, you don't, because we know what's best for you. And it's really, really unfortunate. I could buy a house here, not doing it, absolutely not doing it. I hate to feel that way, because this is home for me. But this council, as it's been all the way back, and I, when I was younger, had connections on the inside and didn't realize until I got out of this city kinda how that worked. It's still that way. And if we have the same people doing the same things, there will not be change. Like, there's just absolutely not gonna be. It's made comfortable for who's here and those few constituents that they listen to, but the general public. When I spoke on the redistricting issue several months ago, my main point was, I'm a proponent for at-will representatives, because the one I had prior to my current had no interest in my demographic. He, he just, he wasn't interested unless I had a nice little house over, maybe being built in the preserve. What I said in that meeting was, it doesn't matter who's in that seat if they're not representing the people. If you're not doing your job, it doesn't matter. It absolutely doesn't matter. And to me, if, one other thing, and my background's hospitality industry, I work from home, so I can work anywhere. There's a lot of people in this city that are that way, and you should be concerned. You should want to retain citizens. You should want to encourage the youth to stay here. But the way everything runs right now in our city, there, there's, it's a dead end for them, absolute dead end, unless they're in a family that has a little bit of connection that could move up somewhere and immediately get into something instead of starting at a low level. Very last thing that I would like to address is, in the hospitality industry, there's an old adage that says, "The handshake of the host determines the taste of the roast." And it sounds silly, but it is how you say what you say is gonna color the perspective of the person that you're speaking to. And after watching these meetings, I took off today, I used a vacation day, I had to use two already because of SWEPCO. So I'm on my third for this one, because it's important to use my voice, even though, when it's all said and done, do I think I'm really, is it really gonna matter? No. I think there's maybe two, maybe three of you that will remember my words, but the rest, this is just another day of business at the council meeting. So the very last thing that I have to say is, what maybe, maybe there's some legal issue that all of us laymen have, are, are missing in the reason that we need this outside opinion. But I haven't seen any of you say, "Hey, we heard your voices, we saw what you want, so here's what needs to happen and here's why." Instead, it was put at the bottom of an agenda, probably hoping that very many people wouldn't show up, and it could just quietly be taken care of, and we could lose our voice either now or even in the future towards the next election. And I say that with respect. I know you're all nice human beings with families and businesses and all of those things, but I'm telling you, I know my voice represents a large percentage of people in our city. And it's your job to listen to us, period. That's it, that's all I got. Thank you.
My name's Robert Wright. I live at 6307 West Oxbow City in Sobo, which is, we think is God's country. Why are we needing expensive legal counsel? I know Judge Jacobs over here has been making judgments like this over the years. I think he's well qualified. I know Richard Ray, he is a well-qualified attorney. Why are we spending the money for outside counsel? And I don't think this is a very difficult decision. The City Charter is very clear about this. It says if you have one-third of the voters from the last mayoral election, and it's been properly certified, which it has been, then you have two choices. Ordinance of 30 days, or putting it before the electorate in the next 90 to 20 days. Now, 120 days. Now, I understand there is some legal issue about maybe an ordinance. Fine, put it aside. Send it to the people. They're the ones to make the decision. Is the voice of one-third of the electorate not important? Do we not think that 50% of the majority of the voters in this city cannot make a good judgment? I think they can, okay? And when you don't do these things, I think you're thumbing your nose at them. You don't have a voice, you know, we're doing, oh, we don't need to ask you for that. This is not a hard issue. The Charter says it. The state constitution says if we get 50%, we can change the Charter. I know there may be an ordinance problem, set it aside, because that, if that is a problem, it does not make the rest of it, you know, unconstitutional, I'm saying the right word. Let the people choose. It's simple. Make a choice and let the people make this decision. Mr. President, Council, thank you very much.
Additional questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Mayor?
Real quick, Mr. Mayor. Why are we even voting on this? Because we had a legal opinion issued to us two weeks ago that we didn't have to vote on, so why are we voting on this opinion?
Is that a question for me?
It's for whoever wants to answer, the mayor, the city attorney, see, I don't, we didn't vote on the last legal opinion on ordinance 76 of 2019, so why are we voting on this? Because your office has the ability to seek these opinions, so if we're not looking to delay, then why are we even voting on this? Because we've had this petition for over a week, we could have already gotten this opinion.
It's not a secret that there are differing opinions on, you know, between members of the council and the mayor concerning term limits. And I have given the council my opinion, you know, which is privileged at this point, covered by attorney-client privilege. And whatever decision the council makes is likely or has the potential to lead to litigation. In order to, you know, prepare for that, to do your due diligence, as opposed to being stuck in, you know, four years of, you know, St. George-type litigation, then it's like getting a second opinion from a doctor. You go to the doctor, one doctor tells you, "You need shoulder replacement surgery." Well, you don't want to have surgery, so you seek a second opinion, and you talk to a second doctor that says, "Well, I think I, I, we can fix the, this problem with physical therapy." In order to hopefully avoid expensive, time-consuming litigation, you know, concerning this issue, then I think a second opinion is prudent. It will cost some money, I mean, there's not, but it won't cost nearly what two and a half, three years of litigation would cost the city. So therefore, due diligence, you know, making sure all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. It doesn't matter whether you're in favor of term limits or against term limits, they still have to be implemented and invoked properly. And in an order to, you know, to do that, I don't think, I think the best course of action, you know, at the present time, would be to seek a second opinion from an outside council, from out of town, who's not connected to anybody or anybody in this area, you know, and so you could avoid all the regular criticism, "Oh, so-and-so's connected to so-and-so, and so-and-so is saying this because of so-and-so." To get an, you know, to avoid that, to step above the fray, to do your due diligence, and to hopefully save money, you know, on, you know, possible future litigation, that is my recommended course of action.
But my question didn't get answered. Because we did not, we have differing opinions in this council about ordinance 76 of 2019, and the mayor disagrees with the majority of the council on ordinance 76 of 2019, yet we got a legal opinion without voting on it. Why are we voting on this legal opinion?
Because I think there were, and again, I do agree with you, I do have the authority to seek it without a resolution from the council. But again, you've heard a lot of talk about transparency, I think there were some complaints concerning that. So I put it in front of the council, in front of the people, so everybody knows that what's going on.
It appears to me that we could have had this opinion and already been discussing what the future steps should be. And so I can't, I just can't wrap my mind around why we need to vote on this, so that's, that's it. And, Mr. Mayor, are you, are you in favor of continuing to delay this by passing this ordinance today?
During my campaigning for mayor, the office of mayor, I ran for term limits. I believe in term limits. And with all the signatures that were, that were up, that have been brought forward, in all the interest of the citizens, I believe that it should be go for those citizens for vote, to find out how they want it.
And Mayor, we do have term limits. Every four years, the voters go before and vote for us or against us.
Yes, they do.
That's my opinion.
No, what I was saying is
Every four years.
Yeah, I understand. I'm saying for 12 years, sir, three terms.
But every four years, we have a term limit.
I
My term is over in four years.
That's very true, sir.
I go back before the voters. If I've done a good job, they vote me in, if I don't, they won't. So why go to the expense of all this to start with? Any additional questions?
Yeah, I do. From my perspective on this, and I'll, I'll probably be out on an island by myself, but I'm a good swimmer. It seems to me that the administration is throwing this to the City Council for us to be the bad guys up here. I'm for the term limits, I'm for this, we, we can vote on it right now, I don't care. Yeah, and you're right, every four years, we are have term limits, that somebody can vote us out of office. But there also needs to be a plan in place when that person keeps getting reelected over, 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 and over. Again, that there's, there, there's no, there's no need in anybody sitting up here more than 12 years. That, that, that's just my thoughts, I think that in government, in higher government, that, you know, the people that have been there in Washington and here, and the police area that have been there for that long, you know, you need fresh perspective, you need new eyes on everything. And I just think this is totally wrong, putting this on the agenda, bringing it to us, because no matter what happens here today, whether two of us vote no, seven of us vote no, we're still gonna be the bad guys on this, and it should have never come from the administration to us. And that's all I have to say.
I've been a citizen in this city for 55-plus years. I've been a councilman for my third term, and I can say from a citizen's perspective, I was very appreciative to the leaders that have been leading on here for 20-plus years. We have a AAA-rated fire department, we have a safe city, our police have done an exceptional job, our former mayors have done exceptional job. These guys have ran a city with solvent city. We have a first-rated fire, police, water, sewer. I have no complaints with what these, these guys did, and I appreciate the work that they've done over the 20 years. It's not all glory. They, they take calls, we take calls, seven days a week, all through the hours. So, and I think are very unappreciative, but as a citizen, guys, I appreciate what you've done for me over my, course of my years in this city, and I love this city, and that's why I serve this city.
I have one more rebuttal then on that. I was not being unappreciative of anybody sitting up here on this council, I was just clearly stating a fact, that fresh eyes and fresh ideas are not a bad thing in order to move this city forward. That, that is, that is my whole explanation on this. You know, we all should have big shoulders up here, we get beat up in the public, and we can't sit up here and say to one another what we feel, then that's not what I was saying. Nobody was unappreciative to anybody up here. It's my turn to speak, I know you keep putting your hand up, but I think I've earned that right to sit up here and speak in front of this microphone.
I'm agreeing with you, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm not saying that I was rebutting your, what you said. I agree with you. Any additional?
Oh, yeah, Ms. President.
Please.
I've been in this city my whole life. We own one of the oldest stores in Bossier, 100 years old. I ran, and I live in District 5, born in District 5, working in District 5. One day, I'm looking out the door, I say, "I want to give something back to my city." That's where I ran for office. I seen this council, before these councilmen got there, the mayor was elected in our store. Look at Bossier City today, why you think everybody's moving here? Safety, clean, schools. That's where I ran, I'll make it better. You know, I fight for my district, I work for my people. You know, every four years, that's a new term. If you don't like what I do, vote me out. If I wasn't doing my job good, I would quit, because I love this city, I love this people, and I love this city with my heart. I wouldn't be up here now if I didn't love it. And these men up here now, I'll tell you, I've been in business all my life. Well, just look at Bossier City and look at the other cities, that's all I gotta say. And this is my home, and I will fight for it. I would do the right thing for Bossier City. And, and these people up here, I gotta take my hat off to them. All those years in my store, oh, about this, about that, look what they did for our city. Number one place to live, safe, pretty, we're making it clean. It's hard, we can't do it by ourselves, we get beat up every day, but we still do it. And that's why I'm gonna fight for my city and my people. Thank you. Thank you.
Can I call the question?
Motion carries.
Reports?
Angela Williams, Williamson Finance Director, monthly financial report.
Good afternoon, Council. Mayor Chandler. You have before you the financials for the month ended June 30th, 2023. Page one is revenue by fund. The city's currently 28% over budget. The majority of the increase in general fund revenue is due to an increase in sales tax and permits revenue, and the timing of the traffic signal maintenance revenue from the state, which was received in July prior year instead of June. The increase in the jail and municipal building fund revenue is due to the arena scoreboard marketing revenue billing in the amount of $87,000. Prior year, it was paid in six installments between September and December. The increase in sales tax capital fund revenue is due to an increase in the sales tax revenue and the distribution to capital current year. Riverboat capital fund revenue is down due to a 15% decrease in gaming revenue current year. Page two is expenses by fund. The city is currently 5% under budget. The majority of the increase in general fund expenditures is due to timing of payroll and transit payments. There was a third payroll in June current year, and the third payroll was paid in July prior year. This increase is combined with a decrease in transit payments. Payments for two monthly billings were made in June 2022, and there were no payments in June 2023. The majority of the increase in water, sewer, and public service and sanitation funds expenses is due to bad debt write-offs. EMS fund expenses increased mainly due to the additional June payroll combined with the bad debt write-offs. Page three is sales tax comparative report. Sales tax revenue is up 11% compared to June 2022. Page four is the Manning report. There are three less full-time employees than last month. Full-time employees are 39 under budget. The number of part-time employees is the same as last month, and part-time employees are six under budget. Page five is the water and sewer utility report. Net operating income after debt service for June 2023 has decreased 117% compared to June 2022. Current year-to-date income has increased 3% from prior year and is 38% under budget. On a rolling 12-month basis, net operating income is up 51%. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Angela, I do have a question, just not relative to current financial statements, but our budgets, you know, are due on September 15th for 2024.
Yes, sir.
How are we coming?
We're currently in, in department, departmental budget meetings this week, and then we have our budget meetings scheduled with the mayor, the, I believe it's the first week of August. So we're on track to get them submitted timely.
You know, annually, we sit down normally, Mr. Williams and myself, and any other councilman, there's, can be three, is welcome to join, that we look, you know, at our revenue projections to make sure that they're conservative in nature, and, as well as ensuring that we have a balanced budget. So I would ask you and the administration that we replicate that process as we've always done in the past to ensure that our, you know, financial statements, or our budget, budgeted financial statements for 2024, we faithful believe that they are conservative in nature.
Yes, sir.
And balanced.
Clinton Patrick, Engineering Department, monthly project report.
Good afternoon, Council. We'll run through our monthly engineering project update. Got a couple of updates here. Sitting at 72 million of ongoing design or construction, with about 64 that actually in construction. Seven projects are in the design or bid phase, with only four currently under construction, and five subdivisions in the construction phase. Biggest one we got going on Carriage Way, they're still, they actually gained about 20 days, they moved, moved ahead pretty quickly. They're sitting about 58 days ahead of schedule. Everything's coming along out there.
73% complete?
Per their billing, yes, sir. Now, that picture's about a month and a half old, it was the last, one of the last areas we took, but they are about 73% complete.
So what's the date of completion, substantial completion?
They're looking about April of next year. Is about what we're looking at.
Wow, that's great.
We should have some updated pictures here. I think we're scheduling another flight next month, so hopefully in the August meeting, we'll have some updated pictures.
Do you have any idea when they're going to be done with the driving?
Do not know. I'll, I'll get that answer for you. 71 lighting, got an update actually this morning, we have a delivered, a ship date of light poles for August 18th. So as soon as those hit the ground, they'll go up, we'll flip the lights on, and we'll wrap that project up.
In the meantime, can they go out there and dress the areas up? I mean, it, it looks horrible.
We've, we've had them try to go out there a couple of times. The last time we had them go out there, believe it or not, was like the day before the really bad storm in June. And so I'll get with them, I'll get with what I like.
Think they can put some silt control down around those areas? I mean, it just, it just looks, it looks horrible.
I'll get with them again, yes, sir. Elm Grove ditch improvements is down there by the Parkway High School football field. You can see they're, they finished laying the underground pipe going into the ditch. They're getting ready to wrap this up, we're waiting on some utility relocates, as soon as they get that done, they'll be able to lay the rest of the pipe, and we'll wrap that project up, and it'll hopefully prevent that road from going underwater in the future. Private development, we've actually wrapped up two of these, I believe, today. We're still working through some stuff at the Cove, but other than that, seeing some subdivision development kind of slow down just a little bit. So our projects that are in design are out to bid. Biggest one, Tinsley, we opened bids on it, the last council meeting, getting a pre-con scheduled for that one. We'll get dirt, started turnover on it, and then some of the biggest thing we're running into is just right-of-way and easement acquisitions for about three or four of the projects. That's really slowing down the project and actually getting it out to construction.
All right, any announcements?
I got something I want to ask the mayor. Mayor, I'm still getting, and I know we got a lot left to do, emails, calls, about LEMs.
Yes, sir.
So what I'm on, and I saw a truck come in my neighborhood the other day, it picked up one street, I haven't seen it since. Could you get them to send you an email what they've done for the day, and you could forward that to us, so we'll know where they're at, what they've done, we can go check it out? Because I, I haven't seen a whole lot of, again, I understand there's a lot of stuff left, but I just don't see no progress, I guess.
Well, and they've done, you know, they cleaned out Mike Wood's park, because people were upset because they couldn't use the park. They cleaned that out, and that other storm came in and it blew down a lot of branches back down there, but they can keep that park open. And there was, there's a lot of other situations that they got, that they got, they're slowly but surely getting it done. And that other, that little storm they had this past weekend didn't help out any. So I apologize to the citizens, we're out there working, we've got some subcontractors out there helping us too, but I'll get with Wade and I'll, I'll get you some, some times and days and stuff like that.
Actually, I have no idea where they're working, because...
Okay, well, I, I will pinpoint that too, sir.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, do you think we need to hire some outside subcontractors to start getting back on the mowing? The longer it takes cleaning up the storm debris, I mean, the grass is just getting taller, taller, and taller.
Yes, sir. Believe it or not, this morning at the staff meeting, he told me that he was going to get back on to that, that, that was getting out of hand, and he had to get back on to that, and he was even asking if we had to get even more grass cutters to help. I mean, it was a, you know, he looking at a bunch of, a bunch of stuff, yes. And he is working, you know, hard as he can too, but he even stated it today, you know, so...
Oh, I know, I mean, I hated even calling Sunday morning to give him a heads up of what was coming his way 30 minutes after the storm, so...
Yes, I mean, he, we even talked about the grass cutting this morning.
All right, thank you.
When you say additional grass cutters, do you mean additional employees or additional contractors?
It could be either way. So, I mean, but of course, it's got to be, we got to come before y'all for any, any of that, so... But, you know, it's going to take, if you want us just to do it, it's going, it's going to take time. But if y'all want it done fast, it's going to take other people, okay? You got, you got one way or another. You want, you want it done by us, it's going to take some time.
You have anything else, Mayor?
Good, buddy.
All right. Ms. Brown, you have some new staff in our MPC? You'd like to introduce?
Carl Adaskew Brown with the Bojor MPC. We have been in long search of an additional zoning inspector for our office, and we have finally hired Mr. Nicholas Taylor here. So he's been with us roughly two weeks, and I'd like to welcome him in front of the city council today.
Outstanding. Welcome to City of Bojor.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm just glad to be a part of the MPC, just learning every day.
Outstanding.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Any, any other business? Meeting adjourned.